Good morning, everyone, and welcome to First County Council this fifteenth day of June. I'd like to call our meeting to order. Everyone can please bow their head for a moment of reflection. Thank you. We have our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that Perth County is situated on the traditional land of the Ananasebe, who have a longstanding relationship with the land and water throughout the region. We honor and respect the history, languages, and culture of the diverse Indigenous, Matia, and Inuit people who call this territory home. As a county, we have a responsibility for reconciliation and a continued stewardship of the land on which we live and work. Okay, we need, we do have an addition to our agenda, and that's item six point two point three, and it's primary care paramedic mobile clinic EOI letter of support. So then we need...
So through the warden for that, what we're going to do is just, we're going to bring that up now, just so everybody is aware of the item. This item was circulated council on June ninth, so this is part of the public record. So if I could get Tristan just to kind of scroll through it, and then we can address it in the consent agenda. I just wanted to make sure that we've got it on there.
Okay, I believe this was all sent to everyone too as well? Last Friday?
All we'll do is, I will also attach this as an attachment to the minutes, so it will be found in there for the public to be aware of as well. That's great, thanks Tristan.
Okay, so then we have a motion that the July fifteenth... June, June fifteenth, not holding.
Yeah.
The June fifteen twenty twenty-three agenda be approved as amended. Good by Counselor Smith, second by Counselor Orr, all those in favor? Carried. Okay, we have twenty, if you have a culinary interest, you can disclose that now or as our meeting goes along. We have twenty-three items on our consent agenda. Is there any item that anyone would like questions on, or they would like poll to see further action? I would like to poll six point two point three. Anyone else? If not, we have a motion that council receives a consent agenda item six point one to six point two three, and that we poll six point two three, and we also approve the May twenty-fifth twenty twenty-three special council minutes and the June one twenty twenty-three regular council minutes. We need a move or move by Counselor McDermott, second by Counselor Herson, all in favor? Carried. Okay, six point two three is, uh... It's just up on the screen, and it's about a letter of support from the local health team, and they're looking for council support. They're getting some money from the government, and to do that, they need our support to help people who don't have doctors. There's an awful lot of people in our municipalities that do not have a family doctor to go to. And so this, that they're doing, so... Is council in favor of that? Matt?
I'd be willing to make the motion that we support that.
Okay, so move by Counselor Duncan, second by Counselor McKenzie. Questions?
Who's going to be the facilitator of all this?
Do you have a mic on? My mic is online.
Well, Mike Switze's?
My question, Mike, is who's going to facilitate all this? And just give me an idea how this might work.
So through the warden, thank you for the opportunity to be here this morning. Am I muted? Can you hear me?
There, now we can hear you.
Okay, perfect. So through the warden, thank you for the opportunity to be here this morning. In terms of facilitating this, it would be the family health teams that would be actually facilitating it. There are examples of programs. One that I wanted to highlight has occurring in Renford County, and they have the VTAC, which is the Virtual Triage Assessment Center. And what they've done for their patients and their community is they have an eight-step process to make sure that no patient is lost in the system when requiring a physician. And that includes either resulting in a, the outcome of that is resulting in individuals in rural and urban areas near and far that may require a physician consult that do not have a primary care physician. And so they are triaged essentially, and they're seen by a physician through consulting in a community paramedic visit, so they work very closely with their community paramedic program. Or they may have a referral to a specialist from a video consult. And so that's the way that they are, uh, doing a similar program in that county. I'm not sure what our family health teams, how it will sort of mold and how it will forge, but we certainly, as a paramedic service, would be prepared to support them in our programming and collaborate with them, as we all know in this community. If you don't have a physician, there's no other option other than to go to the emergency department. So we are thrilled at the opportunity that this may pose for our community and our, the citizens of our county. And from a paramedic standpoint, we would be prepared to support the best that we can within the means that we have, and I guess we will learn more about that as the time comes. And does that answer the question, or feel free to refine that if you were looking for something more specific?
I'm happy with that answer for now.
Okay, any other questions? If not, all in favor of that motion? Carried. Okay, we do not have any public meetings, hearings, or delegations. So the next item is staff reports, and our first one is the CIO, the twenty twenty-three corporate strategic plan. So Sarah, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good morning, Warden Eggers and members of county council. Before you use a report on the update of the county's corporate strategic plan, the strategic plan establishes a core mission and vision and values for the municipality, and it also establishes clear goals and priorities to help guide the programs and work that staff do throughout council's term. The previous strategic plan ran from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-two, aligning with the last term of council, and the updated plan before you will run for the current council term until twenty twenty-six. When undertaking this update, it was important for us to consider the changes and accomplishments that occurred during the last term of council, as well as to take into consideration any emergent priorities that would be impacting our services and communities across Perth County. During this project, we engaged with the community, staff, and council to generate this update, and I want to thank everyone who took the time to provide their valuable input into the development of this plan. At this point, I'm actually going to turn things over to Catherine Osterbahn from Osterbahn Strategy, who has been the consultant assisting us with this project, so she can provide an overview and run me through a presentation about the strategic plan update.
Morning, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here, and it's been a pleasure to be involved in this process, working with both your fantastic staff team and you guys as a council team as well. So as Sarah mentioned, I'm here to present the refreshed corporate strategic plan for Perth County. We can just jump to the next slide. As Sarah mentioned, you know, really the focus of this effort was to look at the strategic priorities and actions to enable you guys to guide it through the next term. We did not, just for the purposes of looking at this, so we really did not refocus in on that mission, vision, and we considered that your goals were relevant and had been key to guiding the county, count through successful priorities and actions in the previous term. So the intent was not to review those as well. What you see before you is an updated version of strategic plan. I hope you all had a chance to review the report before you. The priorities from your previous strategy were reviewed, reviewed for their relevance and their ability to guide the county through the coming council term. And particularly with that lens to, you know, what sort of changes have we seen throughout COVID, and obviously, I mean, not just COVID, but throughout that last council term, but obviously, we've seen a significant amount of changes, and the goal is for these priorities to address those changing needs as we go forward. So just to remind you, I know we shared this kind of at our lesson, but the process that we went through, we started at the end of January of this year, and began with background document review, looking at reports, studies, documents that had been created since the development of your previous strategic plan. We reached out to the community for feedback, for a survey. We consulted with staff for managing team workshops, and then we drafted a refreshed strategy, which we brought towards you guys as the council to provide some additional feedback, which is very informative, and I hope what you see before you reflects those changes and the feedback that you provided. And of course, we have that file strategy drafted for you today, so, um, the, next slide please. As you'll see, this is the strategy to guide you through this next council term, and I'll just go through kind of goal by goal. Some next slide, please. So just to set the framework again, you know, those guiding principles that lends to carry forward is your mission. So Perth County is an innovator of an entrepreneurial region. We celebrate community and enjoy an exceptional quality of life that offers everything, rural landscapes and small towns to urban centers. So again, these did not change from the previous strategy, aside from maybe some small... And then your vision, Perth County aspires to be self-reliant and fiscally responsible region, and to continue to be known for exceptional service delivery and client service focus. The council will strive to enable the region to grow responsibly, innovate successfully, and experience excellent quality of life. And again, we felt those continue to be relevant into this council term. So your first goal, growth and economic development, the priorities that we landed on were Perth County is recognized as a leader in agricultural productivity in Ontario. Perth County growth is responsible and strategic to enhance economic viability. Flexible and affordable transportation options exist within the county, and flexible and affordable connectivity options exist within the county. So speaking both to the importance of agriculture in the region and the ability to drive and grow that sector here, the importance of maintaining that sustainability and sustainable growth as you pursue economic development, and then of course, looking at some key pieces to support some of those elements, such as the transportation and connectivity, both through internet and cell aspects. Next slide, please. So the next goal is around regionalization and service effectiveness. So priority one is services and services and service expectations are clearly defined and communicated. The second is services are efficiently, effectively, and equitably delivered on a regional basis. Again, ensuring that we're reaching out to constituents and clearly communicating constituents and partners, and clearly ensuring that we're articulating our role and the work that the county is doing to drive success going forward, and then of course, ensuring that your services are efficient, effective, and, you know, delivered on an equitable basis across your interregional municipalities. And next slide, please. So this goal is focused on customer service excellence. So Perth County demonstrates service excellence, and the culture of Perth County accepts and embraces change. So you're both driven to support, again, the needs of your constituents, and then also continue to adapt and evolve the services that you deliver, to deliver them on a, you know, on a basis that enables your residents to engage more and to deliver those services in a more effective way. And then next slide, please. So your next goal is community development and planning. So Perth County planning policy supports the aspirations and goals that the county has to hold. So again, making sure we're recognizing the full needs of constituents across the county, of your individual municipalities across the county. Perth County minimizes bringing us missions and climate change impact, and recognizing the critical impact that climate change can have going forward. And then Perth County is an attractive destination for residents and visitors, so ensuring that your community is a place that people want to live, work, and play in. And lastly, we'll add, if you could advance the slide, please, is corporate sustainability. So the priorities that we landed on here are Perth County is an attractive employer, and staff are knowledgeable, capable, and supported in their roles. Facilities and infrastructure are well-maintained and responsibly managed, and technology is embraced as a means of enabling culture and effectively delivering services. They're really focusing on the key elements of what the county operates within, so your staff and ensuring that they are able to drive forward the initiatives and services that you guys deliver, that your facilities and infrastructure are managed to support those services, and of course, that technology, that thing that is, you know, increasing our efficiency and effectiveness at such rapid pace, that you guys are staying on top of that and implementing it as needed to maintain that effectiveness and efficiency. So that sums up the revised priorities for your strategy, and I just, you know, throughout the process, what I wanted to note was, what I heard when I consulted with your respective community, your management team, you guys as a council, is the county has gone great lengths through increasing their credibility, their innovation, their collaboration, the impact that you're able to deliver, and how effectively you're able to deliver that. So I hope that these revised priorities can continue to guide the county to continue success as they deal with growth, ongoing growth. So success, impact, and efficiency through the next council term. And again, I just want to say a huge thank you to staff for their contributions, to council, and of course, the community for their participation, and a special shout out first to Lori Wolf and Sarah Franklin, who provided an extensive amount of support in terms of ensuring that this strategy met the needs of the county and also met the consequences. So with that, I'll jump to my last slide, which is just, you know, a thank you on my behalf, to say, you know, it's been a pleasure working with you on behalf of Osterbahn Strategy, and happy to open the floor to any questions.
Questions, Counselor Orr?
Through the warden, love the presentation, think it's very positive. Just slightly confused, only because Tuesday I went to the Economic Development Strategy session in Mitchell. I wasn't sure how many counselors took advantage of that, because there were two sessions, but it seems like the economic strategies there aren't exactly what I'm hearing through that session. I think Dean might have been on the morning session, so I'm just wanting to make sure that our economic development, because I think we're paying for a strategy with Urban, not sure what the company is, but just want to make sure that everybody's talking there, because I'd hate for us to establish this and then economic development say, oh, no, slightly changed, here we go. Just wondered...
I can, I can respond, thank you, through the warden. So the research that was conducted for the corporate strategic plan was shared with the consultants from the Economic Development Strategic Plan. So these prior goals and priorities serve as sort of a broader umbrella, and the Economic Development Strategy would fit into those goals and priorities, as well as some of the subtasks would align. So I, I mean, Meredith is also in the room, but I presume that strategy will fit into this as well, making sure that the two kind of complement one another and are sort of moving everything in the same direction. Now, that, I suspect that strategy will also have more specific details on actions and priorities related to that division. This doesn't go quite to that granular level, but the two should complement one another.
Counselor Kastenberg?
Yeah, supplementary to that, actually. I mean, we are calling this our strategic plan, it has a three-year window, I believe, if I understand the dates on it. Four-year window, thank you. But you know, of course, priorities can change, and so I guess I'm asking the question, will we, on an annual basis, or could we, on an annual basis, have a look at this document again and sort of validate that what is here is still relevant and that new priorities are appropriately injected? And I think that speaks to Counselor Orr's comments, that we may see an economic development strategy that has some additional information, which could be injected back into this. So I suppose it's a question perhaps for the CEO on that matter.
Okay, Lauren?
Yes, through the warden. We would be reporting annually on the progress of the strategic plan. We would also have that discussion during the budget deliberations to see if there's anything else that we need to adjust in our strategic plan, because you are absolutely correct. Well, we put something out there to guide us. You know, with funding coming up and changes in our communities, we want to take opportunities to deviate from our plan to do the best we can for our communities. So it's generally been all year round as things come up, but you'd be looking at it probably twice a year, once during budget, because everything we bring to you in budget needs to align to this. And then the individual strategies, such as the ACTAP one, we did IT and GIS last year, that one would dovetail as well.
Counselor Kastenberg?
Further, so if a year from now, we decide that, that the language of this constrains our action in some way, and staff is bringing forward budgets and plans and projects that align with the language, do we have the opportunity at that point in time to adjust the language to reflect our...
Through the warden, yes, we do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Kintrowski?
Through you, the warden. Thank you, Catherine and Sarah, for the presentation. My, I guess, matches with Counselor Orr and Counselor Kastenberg, I did participate in the Economic Development Strategy, Strategic Plan Meetings earlier this week, and I was expecting that that process would be completed and reported on prior to county council adopting the strategic plan. Just seems to be a more logical sequence of events to get that feedback and input to complete that component, and then insert that findings into this official plan. And then we would have, we would have the information right there, that we wouldn't necessarily have to go back right away to revise the official plan, and then as, it just seems we're doing things out of sequence, is my concern. I'd be more comfortable to let the strategic plan for the Economic Development Department finish their process first, and then have them report it, and then take that into consideration before we adopt the county strategic plan. My comment.
Lauren? Through the warden, so we could be doing division or function strategies every year of the four-year term. So we have done paramedic services where we've participated with two other paramedic services, and they're looking at their strategies on what they could do for efficiencies. And there may be changes coming, you know, via that avenue, which was a review of their services, and that could change, but throughout the four-year term, we will be looking at different ways of doing business, and it needs to dovetail into the overall strategic plan. If it doesn't, we would adjust the language. So once the strat plan's done, it doesn't mean, even if we did this at the end of this year, it doesn't mean that we wouldn't do another strategic plan for a particular division or a function later on this term. So this gives you the broad umbrella, and then everything can dovetail under it.
Okay, anyone else? Comments, questions? Counselor Kastenberg?
You called for comments now, and that's a different thing than questions, which is what you asked here. So I am not satisfied at this point that the county, that the language in here commits the county to sufficient action on affordable and attainable housing. There is, I think, one bullet point under goal four, it's the fourth bullet point under priority one, which talks about develop, implement, and promote policies and communication that encourage the creation. I'm not satisfied that that's what the county should be doing, that the county needs to be more hands-on, given that we do seem to have a crisis, and many communities in our province have declared a state of emergency around this. So I raise that concern that that particular statement is inadequate to the task. I don't know what to do about it, short of the questioning that I asked earlier with regards to the ability to update our language at some future point. But I think that this council owes it to the communities of Perth County to understand and work towards affordable and attainable housing in a more assertive fashion than just addressing policy and making announcements or communications. Not satisfied with that statement at all.
Okay, anyone else? Counselor Turnkowski?
Through you, Warden. I guess I wanted to draw attention to page, page four of the strategic plan, that'd be page sixty-nine, is two of one of the agenda package. Under protecting the environment, it's noted that the county has recently completed an environmental stewardship plan, to facilitate action in this area. That report hasn't been forwarded to county council yet, so seem to be getting a step there, once again. We say that we've done something, but we haven't made the report yet. Being the chair of the committee, I can confirm that there will be a report forthcoming, I believe, in July, our council meeting at that time, but to put that in our official plan right now would be premature at this point, for the point of information.
Okay, anyone else? Counselor Smith?
Yes, through the warden is there. If we were to continue, I'm just curious about the cost, are we, are we done, as if we pass it today, are we done with paying for this report, or will it be further expenditures if we have to prolong it with some changes, obviously, that we've kind of talked about this quarter?
Who wants to answer that? Sarah?
Through the warden, certainly some of the items mentioned here, I mean, we were, we were discussing if there were language changes that may occur throughout the term of council, and certainly, staff can, can look after that. I would say, you know, Catherine and I have worked together to finalize this document, but certainly, an editable version is available, so if we need to make an adjustment to language throughout the term of council, we'll be able to do that at no additional cost.
Hey, anyone else with comments or questions? Counselor Herson?
Actually, climate change, like, so I noticed that Laurie's updated report, we're working on electric charging station after plan or whatever. Whatever the party you want to use, like, we have no idea where they're going to go, how many is going to go in, how they're going to be funded, because I think I read the other day, and you cracked into my bra, because I'm not the smartest guy in the world, but I think it's, was it two thousand and thirty-five? No internal combustion vehicles can be sold, or can be sold, or I think we're a long ways from getting to that goal.
Oh, Counselor McKenzie?
Well, and I'm not the one to comment on that. Certainly, Jeff, Brett, our CIO, was involved, and I believe he talked to Rebecca the other day, and I know that there was a grant that they were successful in, I believe, I don't think I'm jumping the gun here, and Laurie can maybe jump in, but with regards to charging stations across the whole county. And you feel free to jump in and elaborate that more. I know Jeff was informing what was going on, but he was giving me a lot of information in short amount of time, so.
So, thank you, through the warden, that is correct. There is a grant out there right now, and just over the last week, we did meet as a group to talk about who would like, in their municipalities, to access through this grant a couple of EV chargers, number two. And we have, we have indicated, of course, each of the municipalities would take opportunity of these chargers, there's no cost, the municipalities are not the owners, they're not going to maintain them, the municipalities' contribution would be the parking spots where we would locate them, and given the changes that we have in the upcoming construction for the county courthouse, and that being used by the public to access our services, we'd be looking at putting a couple EV chargers there. We are working on a report for you for July for this, and it's quickly moving, so that'll be an update for July, you know.
Hey, Counselor Kastenberg?
Do you mind if I ask Counselor Herson sort of a clarifying question here? Is the reason you're asking that, because this strategy doesn't sort of identify a role for county in trying to support that architecture?
You know, the agriculture, same building and whatnot, but climate change is a whole lot more than that. Let's be honest. And, you know, I live on a busy road, it's the main thoroughfare to green that. I can be up cutting a lot along the ditch bank, and I will see probably one in ten vehicles an hour or an hour. So we're a county that promotes agritourism, that we want people to come and spend their money here. If you're going to do that, then you better have a place where these people can plug in. Not just one or two or three, you're going to need a whole lot more than that. Not just one or two or three, you're gonna need a whole lot more than that. That's, that's my point.
Katzenberg?
Sorry, uh, Ward, it's just if I can direct this back perhaps to our strategy consultant then. Um, was it something that was considered and, and do you feel that this plan represents some action on the part of county with regards to? Uh, trying to build a new electric vehicles?
I think that um E V was not necessarily explicitly mentioned throughout the consultation. That being said, I do think there is a ro- an role and opportunity to include it both. I mean, to support a champion initiative, like, under that priority um. Two for goal four, so that's under your per county min- minuses, bring out emissions and climate change impact. That support and champion initiatives that help the climate, its residents, landowners. Protect the region's soil, water, air, and lower their environmental footprint. It could potentially fit within that. Um, at the same time, your next priority is Perth County is an attractive destination for residents and visitors. So thinking about, I mean, it doesn't explicitly speak to infrastructure, but you know, these priorities could um. Address that and it does say maintain a tourism promotion and development program. So should it be, you know, should it? Um, it come out that E V chargers are necessary for tourism or critical in driving tourism forward. It could certainly fit within that priority as well. Um, I think it's a challenge to get right down to that level of infrastructure in a strategic plan for the entire corporation. Um, because there's so many different pieces of infrastructure that you may want to consider to support some of that. Um, climate change reduction and greenhouse emission reduction.
Okay. So we've heard lots of things here this morning. We do have a motion that uh was prepared. Is there anything anybody wants different than that? If not, I'll read this and then we'll see where that goes. So council receives the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-six. Corporate strategic plan report and the council approved the Perth County Corporate Strategic Plan twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-six as presented. We have a mover and a seconder. By Councilor McDermott. We have a seconder. Councilor Duncan. Any more comments or questions? Councilor Herson?
If I can support this, don't get me wrong. As long as I know we can make changes. And I've heard that we can, so that I can support.
Warden, I, just to add in from a consulting perspective, I think, you know, with a strategic plan every year, you should be revisiting it and saying, you know, is this still relevant? What's changed in that environment and do we need to adjust anything? Not to, to follow, you know, the hottest new trend, but to ensure that you're still on track. In maintaining kind of that impact effectiveness and efficiency.
Councilor Katzenberg?
And I'm of similar mind to Councilor Herson. I can support it, but with regards to. The one statement about um our approach to affordable, attainable housing, I'm not satisfied. Uh, so as long as I know that there's wiggle room essentially for amendments and modifications to strengthen that language. Then I will cautiously vote yes.
Councilor Orr? Is there an urgency? Could we possibly delay it and wait for the economic development strategy and the agricultural? Strategy and just give it a couple months or?
Through, through the warden. Um, so at this point, we have Catherine's time of sort of. I guess booked for, for up until now, so we hadn't planned for an extended uh use of her time. Um, certainly, I guess, the only thing I would, I would reiterate it if it helps at all with your decision-making here is that. You know, as, as has been stated, this, this strategic plan is, is, is specific but broad at the same time. And, and any strategies that we do from here on or that are accepted or received at this table will be taken into consideration and fit within this. Um, and there is always opportunity to revisit and reevaluate our goals and priorities as we provide updates, so. Um, you know, I, I, I don't want to say that this is something that's locked in stone and, and can never be, be amended. So, or, or, or revisited, because as we know, with something like COVID nineteen, nobody had that on their bingo card for that year, so. Um, if, if that, if that assists, but certainly if it's the will of council to, to make any changes, we can take that into consideration.
Councilor Herson?
Councilor is about a point that I honestly don't see delaying this. It's gonna have an overall effect on the two things that were just mentioned, agricultural plan, economic development plan. You know, they can be tweaked as we go.
I guess my comment, as long as we don't have to wait a year, I'm not waiting a year to update something that we're gonna have in a month. Or two months.
Well, that's why I think we should pass it down. We can adjust as we. As a self-employed person, I have to adjust every year depending on a lot of things. So it's no different here.
At the, uh, go ahead.
Thanks. And then, and then Todd. Just, just to kind of, you know, add to what, what folks have been saying, appreciate your concerns. I do come from an economic development background. That's kind of my area of expertise and I would just add, like, the strategy is. High level enough to take on this most economic development initiatives. There is some targeting here, but you do have your. Attractive destination for residents and visitors. That's your quality of life. That's your labor attraction and retention pieces. Um, you know, you do have the, the overarching um goal of Perth County is responsible and strategic to enhance economic viability. Um, and that really is that essential sustainable economic development and um action going forward. So it's not. Necessarily restrictive and I'm not sure that you want to get more restrictive uh within this. Even um dependent on what comes out of the economic development strategy. I know Meredith was involved in the development of this strat- strategic plan, so certainly she provided her insight as well. Just some closing comments on, on the economic development piece.
Okay, Councilor Katzenberg?
I think just as, as a matter of procedure, or we're made, it's uh, it's clear that if any of us felt that the time had come. To either direct staff to bring forward or report to evaluate or amend this. Or directly act through notice of change, recommend and change the text of the strategic plan, that there are options, so they always. And so, you know, I, I certainly will do something about that uh. Goal four, priority one, fourth bullet with regards to housing. And if, it won't be today, but certainly in the near future, I'll have my thoughts collected around this in such a way that I. Notice of motion to the table or ask for staff employees.
Okay, anyone else? Councilor Orr?
Uh, it should be noted at the Tuesday event that I was at, um, economic develop, one of, one of the main goals um turned to housing. And then we were like, is that really economic developments? Um, is that their goal? Well, they're like, yes, in order to make economic development happen, you gotta have housing. So I, I feel that that was loud and clear that.
Councilor Turnkowski?
It was that seven A M. session and I can concur with uh Councilor Orr's comments that housing was the. A prime topic of discussion and the discussion ranged beyond just setting policy. It was. The discussion ranged into taking affirmative action steps, so I, I can confirm that conversation was held in the morning session. Of that, that event. Thank you.
Okay, so is everyone ready for the uh motion then? Do I need to read it again? It is that we are approving as presented. All in favor? Post? Okay, now we're going to move to planning services and we have uh. Jerika with us this morning. We have an application for plan of subdivision submitted by Patterson Planning Consultants on behalf of H and J. Donegan Holdings. So Jerika, the floor is yours.
Uh, thank you, Warden, and thank you, council, for having me here today to uh. Present this application. So this is N P twenty-three oh one. Um, H and J Donegan Holdings is the applicant and Scott Patterson of Patterson Planning Consultants is the agent. Uh, so this application is taking place at the southern end of Listle. Um, if, next slide. So it's right on the boundary of the existing settlement area, which was expanded by special policy area C. As we can see from the zoning map beside, there are a variety of land uses in this area. The land is already zoned general industrial and there are no proposed changes to the zoning category. Uh, lands to the north are developed with light industrial and residential. Lands to the south, uh, there's a woodlot directly adjacent to the lot and agricultural lands beyond that. And then to the east, uh, we have general industrial uses and to the west, we have future development. Um, so next slide. There are nine lots proposed for industrial land use, so the subject lands are four point nine hectares or twelve point one acres. One hundred ninety-eight meters of front, frontage on Rocker Road. There's a small portion of frontage on uh line eighty-four that I'm going to discuss later. And uh, there will be nine industrial lots with a new municipal street that will be renamed to the satisfaction of. The municipality of North Perth. And on the next few slides, I'm just going to give a short tour of the property. So as we can see here, it's uh relatively flat. It's been used for cash cropping past few years. It has been mostly vacant. Um, next slide. And this is a view kind of looking down the street uh west from Rocker Road, so we have the light industrial uses. Uh, between the lines is kind of a sporting facility where people go. There's a furniture cabinet maker. Um, and the Listle's squash courts. So next slide. So all industrials uh developments in the settlement area of Listle have to take place on full municipal servicing. Uh, this land in particular was part of another subdivision application back in uh two thousand sixteen. And um municipal staff are satisfied that the servicing report that happened at that time is still valid. And that this lot can be adequate, these lots can be adequately serviced. Um, and the servicing requirements will be further discussed in the subdivision uh. Agreement that takes place between the developer and the municipality of North Perth. Next slide. So some community considerations, uh, we definitely are highly invested as a planning department and as um. The municipality of North Perth to uh promote active transportation and pedestrian connectivity. It's just the circumstance that this particular development isn't an area that's conducive for that, so. There won't be sidewalks proposed for this side. Um, perhaps as a municipal project in the future, there will be more opportunities for active transportation in this area. Another large consideration, um, the land is zoned general industrial. But as is noted in the um draft conditions, there will be a note in the subdivision agreement. That the landowners, when those lots become developed, will have to submit as far as the site plan approval, a land use compatibility study. And potentially noise and vibration studies. And the reason for that is that there are residences very close. Um, the, this is looking out from the driveway of the subject land. They're about a hundred and sixty meters. And this is relevant because the Ministry of Environment's, um, we call them the D six uh industrial classification guidelines. Um, there are three classes, classes one, two, and three, and as you progress through them, they kind of, the industrial uses become more. Um, louder, potentially to have adverse effects off-site. The general industrial zone does include uses that are class one um. Industrial uses and that means that their influence area is only seventy meters. And it's likely, given the size of these lots, that that will be the case, that many of these lots are used for uh class one uses. And there won't be any adverse effects that we'd have to worry about. But that clause is still in there just in case a class two or a class three industry is proposed. And a class two industry has an influence area of three hundred meters. And a class three industry, which I think is very unlikely on this site, would be a thousand meters. So that's all for that slide. The next part I want to speak to, so the applicants did submit an archaeological assessment. Um, a stage one and a stage two. There was no resources. Or uh cultural heritage artifacts found on the property, so no further study required. Um, we did have a comment come in from a member of the public who had concerns over the woodlot. And uh, what is happening with that woodlot? It was a discussion point back into s- twenty sixteen. With the original subdivision application, so it was delineated. And what was put on around the woodlot was an adjacent land overlay. And what the adjacent land overlay means in the zoning is if any um developer. Uh, proposes development in that region within thirty meters of the woodlot, they're going to have to trigger um. An environmental impact assessment that can demonstrate that what development they are proposing. Won't have any adverse on that, adverse effect on that woodlot. Uh, so we're satisfied, the plan department is satisfied that that adjacent land overlay will do enough to protect the natural heritage feature in this area. Uh, the resident also was curious about the potential for this little piece that comes down. Onto line eighty-four, if there could ever be a driveway there. And they agree, uh, discuss, uh, discussion with public works staff and just kind of looking at the site. It's highly unlikely that that will be the case. If you go to the next slide. This is, uh, the picture on the right is where that kind of pathway goes into the bush. As you can see, it's very close to an, another industrial laneway. And because of the woodlot, it, it's just the capacity to access Rocker Road is such that. Any um user of lot seven will likely not want to use this um access. And they probably won't be granted this access from North Perth. So um, this information was relayed to that community member and they appeared satisfied with uh discussions with staff. Um, I think that's the end of my slides, if you want to go. Yep. So notice of application for this one was given on May second, twenty uh twenty-three. Um. Agency comments have been included, just the standard um utility providers and that. And uh, the planning department is supportive of this application, so I'm happy to answer any questions you might have and thank you for letting me present today.
Okay, thanks, Jerika. Questions or comments? Councilor McDermott?
Uh, through the board. Um, that woodlot is, uh, is the woodlot part of the lot? Or is that owned separately by somebody?
So, uh, through you, Warden. Um, part of that woodlot is owned by the municipality of North Perth. But I think this section, and I'd have to double check, is owned by the applicant, but it's a separate block already. So it's not included in this application.
Okay, and the second question, you said that adjacent land overlay. You've already got a thirty-meter area around the woodlot. How far then does this go out from the woodlot then? Like, how, how much further out from the thirty meters are we?
Oh, it is thirty meters. I'm sorry. The adjacent land overlay is thirty meters around the woodlot. That, that's all it is.
Okay.
They're, they're synonymous with one another. I'm sorry if I didn't make that clear.
Oh, okay, but that's already in their bylaws, so just wondering why you would. Make note of it when it's already in the bylaw?
I, I just wanted to um make note of it because um. If that hadn't already been in place, uh, we would have been prompted to ask the applicant. For an environmental impact assessment for this subdivision application. But because it was done back in twenty sixteen, we, we're not going to ask them to do it now, especially when they're not proposing. Like, the developer might not be developing this site, someone else might be, so that, that was the purpose of noting it for this meeting.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, we do have a motion that council receives the application for plan of subdivision submitted by Patterson Planning Consultants, Inc. On behalf of H and J Donegan Holdings, N P twenty-three dash zero one report. And then council approved application, N P twenty-three dash zero one for plan of subdivision submitted by Patterson Planning Consultants, Inc. On behalf of H and J Donegan Holdings, subject to the conditions of draft approval listed in schedule C attached. By Councilor Katzenberg, second by Councilor Duncan. Any more comments or questions? All in favor? Carried. Okay, thanks, Jerika. Now we're going to move on to economic development and tourism and this morning we have Ashley, Justin and Maggie with us. And they're going to give us tourism and transportation. And they're going to give us a tourism and transportation update, so. Welcome, you three, and the floor is yours.
Thank you. Hi, great. Well, through the board and I'll kick things off. So happy to be here again this morning to provide our uh, bi-monthly economic development and transportation, economic development is a main transportation update. Uh, so I'll, yeah, gonna kick things off and then pass up my colleagues. So, uh, next slide, please. So as we've heard, uh, we're currently undertaking an economic development strategic plan, uh, and I just wanted to highlight that we did have, uh, we're on track with our consultants from Urban Metrics who are leading this process. We're currently in the public engagement phase. So to that end, we had new stakeholder engagement sessions earlier this week in West Perth where we had, uh, thirty stakeholders representing uh, business, government, uh, community organizations, business support organizations, uh, non-for-profits and more. So we had a, a number of, uh, great conversations at that session. And also wanted to take this opportunity to, uh, remind folk that there still is time for inputs. We have a an online survey that is being, uh, being held online. So you can, uh, find that on our economic development webpages. Uh, and please do provide your comments if you haven't already had a chance to do so. And even if you were able to attend at the session, it also provides another opportunity to provide maybe some different responses and, uh, a different set of questions as well. So I just wanted to provide that reminder to council, to staff and also to the community, uh, more broadly, please do fill out that survey. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, so I wanted to also highlight our digital service squad, which obviously continues to operate across the county. So, uh, to date, we've able, been able to assist over fifty businesses with our DSS service since this latest iteration. Uh, again, that's things like helping businesses with website issues, social media, Google My Business accounts, uh, three sixty photos and more. Uh, we're particularly happy to see eight businesses in Perth County successful with the digital transmission grants. So they're at twenty-five hundred dollar grants to help support digital transmission within businesses. And our DSS can use three to, to twelve businesses who currently have applications in process uh, to really help them with that, with that application, hope to get forward the lines. We get as many businesses uh, from Perth County, uh, receiving this funding while it's open and, and its funds available. So uh, great work being done by our DSS. And also, uh, I think I mentioned last time, we're I trying some new things to reach new businesses. We have a lot of, uh, repeat businesses, but continue to try to reach those harder to reach businesses. So uh, to that end, we've got a number of business events planned across the county in various locations, including libraries uh, on focus specific topics. So things like, uh, social media, uh, website design and kind of more focused, uh, workshops. So opportunities for businesses to kind of find one that they need to need to attend. As well, we're also offering now, uh, ongoing digital drop-in hours at our office. So businesses can show up anytime uh, Mondays currently to, uh, have assistance with the DSS service squad. So again, in addition to our, our regular outreach, uh, phone calls, emails, stopping by businesses, we're trying some new tactics to increase our uptake on that program. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, so I just wanted to touch a bit on our, our business retention expansion activities. So as part of our B R E activities, we are conducting a number of business tours across the county. So today we were at, uh, Ben Shaw Candy Controls uh, in North Perth and Listowel and, uh, Millbank Hardware in, uh, Perth East. Uh, as well, we have three more tours that are upcoming, uh, and we're just scheduling. So the, uh, buyer agrimix in West Perth. Uh, Stratford Farm Equipment in Perth South and a rescheduled date for our Black Donleys Tour again in West Perth. So uh, really good opportunities to, uh, meet the leadership teams of these organizations, uh, hear about the history, uh, showcase kind of some homegrown success stories from Perth County as well as highlighting opportunities for careers for our youth and young people, uh, you know, really some, some uh, great high skilled and medium skilled opportunities that, uh, folks may not, may not know exist within our community. So this is a great opportunity to do that. Uh, and to that end, we're also, uh, had our photographers, videographers accompany us on these tours. And we'll be rela- relaunching our Prosperant Perth County series, this time with a focus on business retention and expansion. So the, the tours will act as, uh, it's really a, a film shoot to capture and profile those businesses to really share those stories and opportunities beyond just those folks who are locally ten that day. So I look forward to using those videos very in the future. And then uh, in addition to our, our business retention expansion, obviously with our, our current businesses, we continue to try to attract new businesses to the county. So since our last update, we've had twenty-two investor meetings through our South Western Ontario Marketing Alliance partnership uh, with companies who had an interest in coming to Ontario. As well, we did also move on, uh, inbound delegation of company representatives who had an interest specifically at, uh, developing a greenfield opportunity here in Perth County. So uh, that's just a quick highlight on some of the economic development activities. And I'll pass things over to actually for a tourism update.
Thanks, Justin. Come on the next slide. Yeah.
Morning County Council. Uh, on the tourist side, we're continuing to grow our Discover More Adventures experiential tourism program, adding four new signature experiences to the catalog of adventures in twenty twenty-three. On the screen over here, you'll see a sneak peek of a few of these upcoming experiences, all of which are now market ready and will be officially launched throughout the summer and fall. In addition to adding new experiences to the program, we continue to reinvest in those existing signature experiences through marketing and development support to help ensure continued success. Our Discover More Flavor Farm Date Map program also continues to grow with enhancements made to our digital map and new assets added to the website, including themed dinareries. In the month of May, we updated program signage as requested, uh, delivering to over twenty-one of the eighty farms, some updated and new signage items. We launched a marketing campaign throughout local food, food week that showcased over thirty-eight of our local producers, ingredients, beers, produce, desserts, restaurants and more. And I encourage you to watch for our Perth County Farms Stratford Tables commercial launching on CTV in mid-July to align with pick your own blueberry season. We look forward to continuing to market and develop our agritourist assets throughout the year. Next slide, please. We also continue to grow cycle tourism in our region with the launch of a new cycle roadmap, enhanced cycle webpages, strategic partnerships with local cycle events and trail support efforts. In response to these efforts, the cycle community continues to engage with us and provide positive feedback. They're often requesting the new apps, private information, trail information and more. We're excited to keep this momentum up throughout the rest of the year. And social media, digital marketing and paid advertising are important elements of Perth County's destination marketing efforts. With just over eighty-seven hundred followers across our social channels, we continue to share relevant content in order to build and engage with our online community. In the last ninety days, tourism's posts have reached over eighty thousand users with the top locations these users being Listowel, Mitchell, Stratford, Toronto, St. Mary's, Kitchener and London. We anticipated our online reach only growing through the summer as we have some exciting promotions and overnight content creator partnerships planned. With this very brief overview of our latest destination development and destination marketing activities, I'll pass it over to Maggie for that day on PC Connect.
Some, thanks, Ashley. After the warning, good morning, County Council. I will be joining you again, uh, later this morning. So I will try to keep that very short and sweet. Tristan, you just pressed play on that video. Us. Um, so to date, we've serviced nearly twenty thousand riders on PC Connect and we continue to grow our ridership um, at an average rate of seventeen percent month over month. So in order to continue at this positive growth rate, um, and really gain more ridership, we are focusing a lot of effort um, on executing some extensive marketing and advertising efforts. Um, as you can see on the slide here, this is just a sneak peek at some of the new footage that we've just acquired, um, to really just show off our buses in our service. Um, so this video is just an example of some of the new shots that we've got. And we'll be using these, uh, clips to compile storytelling video series. Um, that'll really highlight the impact that PC Connect has had on the lives, um, of many of our residents here in Perth County and surrounding areas. Um, we're also going to use that to launch some new digital marketing, um, through some targeted social media ads. Uh, so far this year, we have had a reach of nearly a hundred and thirty thousand accounts with our PC Connect content with over a thousand reactions and comments, which really represents the success of our engaging, uh, content that's continuing to be pushed out um, through our social media on a weekly basis. Next slide, please. Um, so this slide also includes a sneak peek of some of our new content that we've just captured. Again, we'll be using it to update our assets, um, and it did, and in addition to our digital advertisements, we'll be using them to create, uh, new print assets such as posters and postcards, newspapers and print advertisements, so on and so forth. In addition to this, we are currently, uh, we do have ads on some radio stations. So right now we're live on Two Day FM and CJCS, which are both stations out of Stratford. And we have plans to also air on CKNX and The One, as well as Listel's The Ranch. Um, and in addition to this, we can also be found in many publications throughout the county. So, um, yeah, same times. As you can see on the left here, we've also officially launched our PC Connect library bus passes. These were officially available, uh, this past Monday. And they're now available for, um, residents to borrow free of cost from any of our Perth County Information Network library branches, uh, which includes Listowel, Atwood, Moncton, um, Melverton, Mitchell, Stratford and St. Mary's. So our press release received a lot of great interest, which resulted in some awesome coverage around, um, across our local news outlets as well as CBC News. Um, and our initial social media announcement had reached, um, over thirteen thousand, um, accounts and received um, almost four thousand percent more reactions than our median posts on Facebook in the past ninety days. So we're certainly really pleased, um, with the response from our residents. Um, there's been a lot of great interest from it and everyone's really excited. So we look forward to monitoring the success in this new program over the next two weeks and months and the summer. And with that, um, I have a brief updates before you, and I think maybe that of our slideshow. Um, so we welcome any questions that you may have for the team. Uh, and we also look forward to seeing everyone at our full house tour later today.
Okay, comments or questions? And as Maggie said, today is the full house tour and conjunction with the Here in Perth Builders Association, we thank you for all that you've done. I look forward to this afternoon driving around the county and seeing all the different types of housing that we have. So I think it's going to be a great day. Counselor Orr?
Just one question, going back to Justin, um, there were twenty-two investor meetings?
Yes.
Yes. When do we ever find out how many actually, you know, are in the positive for us of those meetings?
So in terms of, uh, those investor meetings, are you, are businesses have expressed an interest in coming to Ontario or Canada? So,
Yeah.
uh, you know, we along with our Soma partners, so in your salt, you know, we, we feel them as a group.
Yeah.
Uh, and then usually at that point, once we've had the meetings, um, you know, there's usually a follow-up with some next steps. Uh, and at that point where they are, it's like, to the community, uh, that's when we would kind of get the finer details on this, you know, site or a specific need. So at this point, it, you know, it's mostly, uh, you know, it's, it's interest in, you know, they kind of have some broad ideas of what they want to do in, in Ontario or Canada.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, and some of those may, may go further than that. Some of them, you know, that might be all that, you know, they may find other locations that are more appealing. Uh, obviously we're competing on a global scale for a lot of these companies. So, uh, yeah, it's really, you know, there, there's, it's a, you know, we cast a broad net and we're trying to catch, you know, we're only uh, trying to catch a few of those fish, I guess, with those meetings.
Okay, anyone else? If not, we have a motion that council receives economic development, tourism and transportation update report. Moved by Counselor Acheson, second by Counselor Kassenberg. All in favor? Carried. Thank you very much. Okay, now we're going to move to corporate services and our first report is a corporate services made twenty twenty-three update. And I believe Annette's going to that. So Annette, the floor is yours.
All right. Good morning, everybody. Um, just quickly, when I watch my kids play soccer, I'm not allowed to cheer because it embarrasses them. So I like forgot to be on the silent clap. So as I'm sitting here, I'm doing a little silent clap because I noticed that Tyler has his plaque for his CMO designation, um, which he received, got to walk across the stage at AC TO, and I don't want embarrassment, but here's my little silent clap. Okay, so on that note, um, highlights for our corporate services from the past month. The new Perth County roadmap will be going to print at the end of the month. Uh, GIS Communications and Public Works collaborated with the lower tiers who all provided insight and feedback. Um, and the, the map is one of the county's most requested items. There will be a report coming to council on that map, but, um, each municipality will receive, uh, some for distribution. I believe that five thousand will be going to print and we'll go from there in terms of whether or not more are required. Also attached to the report, you will see the new accessibility tri-fold brochure, uh, which was created by our communication officer. And it was approved by the Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee. And the purpose of this brochure is to serve as a resource for future events, community initiatives, background information, and to be used for in-depth working opportunities to educate residents about uh, POA hybrid court has actually remained at five Huron for the month of June. The month of May worked well. It helped to alleviate some of the pressure with regards to noise and dust from the construction of the courthouse elevator and the regional senior justice of the peace did approve uh, the court remaining at five Huron for the month of June. Hours of operation for archives, access to the reading room will be expanded to include drop-in services on Saturdays for the months of June, July and August. And a few other quick hits, uh, Archives has prepared twenty-one local history articles this year for Stratford, Mitchell and Listowel newspapers. It's really great to see them promoting the archives. Finance is participating in a program called Amp It Up with the Municipal Finance Officers of Ontario Association. And this is for our asset management program. And the purpose of, um, this program is for sharing implementation, I, areas of concern and feedback. GIS began a project with Perth East to update their municipal drains layer. Sorry, municipal drains layer data. And you'll also see in the report, um, the various professional development seminars that staff in corporate services attended last month. And you'll see the introduction of our students in POA, GIS and Archives. So we're very pleased to have Emma Kessel and Courtney Ray join POA. Claire Drake is returning to Archives, Hannah Zimgach. I apologize, Hannah, for not pronouncing your, your last name properly, but Hannah, uh, Zimgach Street has also joined Archives and Valen Norona has joined GIS. So subject to any questions, that is my update.
Okay, thanks, Annette. Any questions of the report or comments? No, okay, we do have a motion that council receives the corporate services made twenty twenty-three update report for information. Moved by Counselor McKenzie, second by Counselor Orr. All in favor? Carried. Okay, and our next report is administrative monetary penalty system and school bus armed cameras. And Annette, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you. Tristan, if you can pull up the slides. Perfect. Next slide, please. Sorry, next slide, Tristan?
I guess so.
Oh, okay. All right, I'll start. Um, so on July first, twenty twenty-two, the province enacted new legislation which allows for an alternative method of adjudicating certain driving offenses that are captured using camera systems. So those, uh, offenses are specifically related to automatic speed enforcement, red light cameras, automated school bus armed cameras and streetcar cameras, which obviously does not apply to Perth County. So today we're going to talk about administrative monetary penalty system and also school bus armed cameras. Amps is, uh, stands for Administrative Monetary Penalty System. Some municipalities are now referring to it as apps. They are removing the reference to monetary so that there's less emphasis on the monetary aspect of this program. So what this program does is it diverts vehicle-based contraventions, which are captured by camera from the court system to an alternative system for payment and resolution. It is an often system. It is not mandatory. And I guess the question becomes, why would the municipality do this? And when we look at the goals of the program, it really is to enhance road safety for municipalities and to, uh, reduce court time. And the idea is that by reducing court burden, the impact of POA courts, which are associated with these types of charges, will help to be alleviated, which in turn should make it more viable for municipalities to use camera technologies for road safety. Uh, next slide, please. So how does amps work? How does the system work? Um, it is the municipality that issues the administrative penalty instead of the police issuing a ticket roadside. So what happens is the, the, um, administrative penalty, it's also known as the penalty. So what happens is the, the, um, administrative penalty, it's also known as the penalty order or the notice of penalty. It is comparable to the existing POA fine equivalent. Um, the penalty is imposed on the owner of the vehicle, not the driver. Nothing goes on the owner's driving record and no demerit points are deducted. And when there is non-payment, the owner's driver's license is not suspended. But rather the penalty must be paid in order to renew the vehicle ownership. Next slide, please. So to help illustrate the difference between the current process. Where a ticket runs through the POA court system, this is what the current process looks like. So an offense occurs, i.e. speeding or, um, a blow-by. There has to be a witness. Typically that witness is a police officer. So the police officer. Um, sees the offense occur and then pulls the driver over. The police officer gathers evidence. So there are certain criteria that need to be met in order for the, uh, offense to have been committed. And then the police officer lays that charge. The fine is either paid. There's demerit points given and/or the, the driver contests the fine, contests the ticket through the court system. So that is our current process. Next slide, please. How the process would change for those specific charges that amps would apply to, so. Uh, automatic speed enforcement, red light cameras and, uh, blowbys. What happens is the offense occurs and it's captured by either photo or video. So it eliminates the need for a witness. That photo then goes to a processing center. And the processing center links the photo of the license plate to the owner of the vehicle. And then a notice is mailed to the owner of the vehicle. The owner can then pay the fine or they can contest the penalty. Through a screening officer. And then if they still disagree with what the screening officer does, the screening officer has the ability to reduce or vary. The fine, then they could appeal to a hearing officer. So it does not go through the court system. So the difference lies in the fact that it's not the police laying the charge. Um, it is. The, uh, the processing center that issues the offense notice. So if we go to the next slide. You can more clearly see here what the difference is. There's no need to have a witness. There's no police officer needed to lay the charge. The processing center doesn't. And if it's contested, it goes to a screening officer and not through the court system. So next slide. How do we implement this? So in order to begin, we need a variety of agreements in place. The first is that we need an agreement with the MTO. And we need an agreement for the MTO for each type of, um, enforcement system that we could potentially have. So you could have an amps program for all three of those types of charges. Or you could have an amps program for, um, for just one. So if that's say you wanted to just pursue automatic speed enforcement. You could do that, but you do need a separate agreement for each type of program. Because the administrative penalty is laid against the owner, we need an agreement with ARIS in order to be able to. Access the name of the registered owner of the vehicle. And there is a fee for that. It's eight dollars and twenty-five cents per ticket. Uh, in order to get that information. We also need an agreement with MAG for a variety of different matters, including the victim component fee. So this is equivalent to what's called the victim, uh, victim fine surcharge, which, uh, is mandatory. It's proportionate to the fine set out in regulation. But it will carry forward that victim fine surcharge, uh, would carry forward through an app system as well. We need agreements with vendors who can supply, install and maintain the cameras. And we need to make sure that they can transfer the photos or videos, uh, appropriately. We also need a processing center. To, uh, review the photos, to receive that evidence and to lay the charge. He could join a joint processing center, be current, uh, there's a current one-time fee of fifty-four thousand dollars to join the processing center in Toronto. And then there's an ongoing fee of twenty dollars per ticket. Um, just of note, Toronto's processing center does not currently process school bus armed camera photos. We could consider establishing our own processing center. Um, now LAS, AMO's Business Services is in the process of deploying a pilot project in Barry to offer a standardized processing center. Um, that pilot will first focus on automatic speed enforcement. Then red light cameras and last the school bus. So that's also a possibility as well. And then finally, keep in mind that, oh, we need a, a software vendor, someone who could support the pro or, uh. Software that could support the program, track payments, track appeals, um. Make sure that everything basically follows through a work process. Um, so we need that support as well. And then keep in mind that we have an intermunicipal service agreement between St. Mary's, Stratford and the County of Perth. For our fine revenue distribution, which is based on the location of the offense. And then distributed to the member municipalities based on weighted assessment. So, once we have all of these agreements in place, we then need to create a, a framework. So next slide, please. This is a lot. Because it is. Um, although the province says that we can create an amps program, they don't really necessarily say how. So we are responsible for all aspects and costs of establishing amps. So we would need to, one, create the regulatory framework. Um, there would have to be an authorizing bylaw with council approval. We would need, as I mentioned, software. Accessible forums. I do know that the Ontario Traffic Council is working on having some template forums developed for penalty notices. Uh, we need workflows. We need training. We need policies such as fees. So what that means is can we charge for, for instance, a late payment fee? Or if a person doesn't appear for a screening or a hearing. Uh, policies for reductions or variances, you know, can the fine be reduced? Payment plans, unpaid penalties, which would go against the license renewal. So we need a variety of policies in place. We also need a privacy impact assessment. So municipalities must ensure that all privacy options and all, or all privacy obligations are met. So we need to consult with the Information Privacy Commissioner. And apparently there is a six-month intake, uh, wait. So we'd also need to engage in public education and an awareness campaign. And we need to ensure that there's appropriate signage within the community to let them know. And there's mandatory annual and bi-annual reporting requirements to both MAGS and MTO. Next slide, please. What does this look like in terms of staffing? So. In terms of, um, staffing, we're probably looking at four additional people. We would need to secure provincial offenses officer and that is the person that lays the charge. So. This could be a way that we could get around, uh, joining a joint processing center. Only provincial offenses officers can issue an administrative penalty. So this may be done through a joint processing center, or perhaps we could do our processing center on our own. Provincial offenses officers must be trained and designated by the province. Vehicle owners, as I mentioned, can test, can contest the penalty to a screening officer and then appeal to a hearing officer. The provincial offenses officer, screening officer and hearing officer must be three separate individuals. They cannot be the same. Uh, the screening officer must be an employee of the municipality issuing the administrative penalty. So we can't share screening officers. There may be an opportunity to share a hearing Waterloo reports is that approximately two point five percent of their administrative penalties are disputed. So there may not be enough disputes to, um, justify a full-time hearing officer, but it's a possibility for cost savings. And we likely need someone to pull this program all together, you know, coordinating the policies, workflow, schedules, preparing reports, remitting payments. Notifying MAG of non-payments. Um, there's a lot of work to be done. So let's look at numbers. Can we go to the next slide, please? Thank you. Here are the numbers from last year with regards to the type of infractions that fall under an app's program. So in the left column, you'll see the infractions. The next column shows the number of charges that were laid in Perth County last year. And the end column shows the gross revenue. And I want to talk a little bit about gross revenue. Because this is the total amount that's collected, there are certain pullbacks. So we pull back court costs, we pull back that victim fine surcharge, which I already mentioned. Administrative late fee, potential, and overhead. But for ease of reference, we're going to work with this gross revenue, uh, number of four hundred ninety-two thousand dollars. Our next slide, please. So taking a look at these numbers, I want to be very clear that they are abstract. This is not a precise estimate. It's difficult to provide something more definitive when it really depends on things such as how many cameras would we install? How many penalties would those cameras, um, capture? And how much of the fines could actually be collected? So this is just meant to give you an overview. Um, I've used a multiplier of three and this is based on the increase that Waterloo saw when they installed their automatic. Um, speed, um, their ASE cameras. So if we times it by three, we're really looking at an estimated gross revenue of one point four seven million. Now I want to talk a little bit about appendix B. There is an error in appendix B. Under the school bus armed cameras, uh, there's an estimate of approximately three hundred and seventy-five dollars per, per school bus per camera. But it is per month. So in appendix B, the times twelve was left out of the calculations. So the correct number for the estimated annual cost is two point nine seven million dollars. So appendix B will be updated to reflect this number and my apologies for that error in the materials. So what you're looking at for the potential, uh, annual cost is two point nine million versus an estimated gross revenue of one point four. So the next question then becomes specific to school bus armed cameras. Can we install school bus armed cameras without relying on an amps program? And the answer is yes. Municipalities can set up a school bus camera program so long as the requirements of, um, of a specific regulation, OREG four two four dash twenty are met. And what that regulation says is that the pictures can serve as evidence without the requirement for a witness to appear in court. Now a police officer, whether it is the OPP or Stratford Police, and I'm bringing Stratford Police into this because. It depends on the location of the fence, of the offense, recall the intermunicipal service agreement. Um, the police officer needs to review the photos that's taken by the camera. And then send the offense notice to the owner of the vehicle who can either pay the fine or request. Um, a trial and it would go through the POA court. So in order for this to succeed, a partnership is needed between the school bus operators. The school board, police services, MTO and MAG. So next slide, please. Again, let's look at the cost. So keep in mind that we have fifteen, uh, fifteen blowbys last year. I don't think that times fifteen blowbys by a multiplier of three is appropriate in this instance. So, um, the number I took. Was two blowbys per day and that was given to me by John Chapman, who's the owner of, uh, New Roy Coach Lines that provides bussing services to schools in Perth County. So if we have two blowbys per day. And there's a hundred and ninety-four teaching days per year for Ontario schools, we're looking at three hundred and eighty-eight offense notices. Um, the minimum fine for failure is four hundred and ninety dollars. Now, uh, for the three hundred and eighty-eight offense notices, we are assuming that the police have the capacity to review those photos. And issue notices and that all of those photos are clear and meet the evidentiary requirements. So. With those numbers, we would be looking at an estimated gross revenue of approximately a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Referring back to the estimated cost per school bus armed camera. It's, it's from Vera Mobility who, who provides the ASE and red light cameras in Toronto. The estimate they gave us. Uh, was approximately three hundred and seventy-five dollars Canadian times twelve months times three hundred and twenty-five buses. You'd be looking at one point four million dollars. Next slide, please. I think that it's really important to note that the installation of school bus armed cameras is not, um, it's not revenue generating. And it may not reach cost recovery, obviously, given the numbers that were just, just presented. It really is a safety initiative and that safety initiative, initiative means that we all have a role to play. Regulation of school bus, uh, safety is shared between the federal and provincial government. The federal government, specifically Transport Canada, is responsible for establishing safety standards. And requirements for school buses in Canada. So it ultimately falls within federal jurisdiction to mandate school bus arms. School bus armed cameras. The province is responsible for maintaining and enforcing those safe, safety regulations imposed by the federal government. The provincial offenses court provides for the administration of charges, convictions and enforcement. The OPP and Stratford Police Services lay the charges. Uh, the two school boards, Avon District Maitland School Board and Huron Perth Catholic School Board, they have a duty to keep our children safe pursuant to the Safe Schools Act. And Huron Perth Transportation Services delivers on that duty. They coordinate five bus companies with approximately twelve thousand students riding a school bus to and from school each day. Next slide, please. So how do we bring these organizations together to work together? Um, we have the Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan. The executive leadership team of the Community Safety and Wellbeing Council includes members from Stratford, St. Mary's. All of the lower tiers, Stratford Police Services, Perth County OPP and also Stratford Social Services and Paramedic Services. Avon Maitland District School Board is a key stakeholder. And priority area number one for the council includes enhanced prevention and protection for safer communities. The council also invites members of the public to contact them with emergent safety issues, ideas for how to address them. And for information related to safety that can be shared throughout their networks. So all of these organizations have a role to play to ensure the safety of children in Perth County. And really that's why I'm recommending that the issue of installing school bus armed cameras be referred to. The council for further research and collaboration. Next slide, please. So in terms of next steps, like where do we go from here? The Minister of Transportation responded to North Perth's request that the provincial government provide funding for amps programs for small and rural municipalities. And that they mandate school bus armed cameras. So as you can see, for small and rural communities. We don't necessarily have the, the volume of charges that are, that, that's needed to offset the cost of installing amps. So the Minister of Transportation responded that they're monitoring the federal government requirements. And have suggested that municipalities can save costs by partnering on joint processing centers. We do know that Waterloo has gone out for an RFI for a system to, uh, best manage and their amps program. Uh, the issue of provincial government underwriting the cost of amps for small and rural municipalities will be brought forward. As a delegation at the AMO Conference in August by Western Warden Ontario's Caucus. Uh, and through the Community Safety and Wellbeing Council, we previously asked for Huron Perth Student Transportation Services to gather statistics related to the number of blowbys. Specifically the frequency, time and location. And this will help inform activities moving forward. So for instance. If there's an area where blowbys are more frequent and that can be addressed in another way, then perhaps that's another way to, um. Uh, to address this program. So, you know, perhaps if we know that there's one particular road where it's happening more frequently. Then we can determine whether or not it's the OPP or if it's Stratford, who needs to be there and should there be an increased police presence? Can we, you know, dictate that that be a school safety zone? Different steps that we could potentially take to address the issue. And finally, our communications officer is going to assist the Community Safety and Wellbeing Council with a media campaign. Surrounding school bus safety and the requirement to stop when the arm is extended. And that campaign will launch in September to coincide with Bus Safety Week. So with that, uh, next slide, please. That is my presentation and I am open to any questions that you may have.
Okay, thanks Annette. Comments or questions, Counselor Kessenberg?
I want to acknowledge that this is one of the, the most comprehensive and well-written reports I've seen in my years of service as county council. Um, an incredible job and I'd thank, uh, Ms. Diamond and all of her team. Uh, for the amazing work that has sort of simplified what is a very complex issue. As we can see from the report and, um, and bring forward possible solutions, including even a look at potential budgets and, and that's very much appreciated. Um, I, I think, you know, as we look at those budgets, we realize that this is a significant cost. And the question that we have, and, and I'm, I have no answers on that wise is. Um, is that cost worth the safety considerations that, that have been? Or that could be advanced in, in this particular case? Um, I'm sure that, um, that's one of those, those wisdom of Solomon dilemmas. That, um, most of our citizens would have an opinion on if we explained the information as eloquently and clearly as you did today. Um, I know that, um, we have let the province know. Uh, that we believe, uh, perhaps I'll borrow their own expressions, they should make us. uh, that we believe, uh, perhaps I'll borrow their own expressions, they should make us whole by taking care of this. And um, I'm happy to continue to see that advance. And I'm delighted that the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus, and I'm sure Warden Nagus will represent us well there, um, will have a say uh to the minister at the meeting. Um, but certainly uh deeply appreciative for the, the information uh, recognize that uh, it, it would appear that the cost in Perth County, if, if back of the napkin map that I was paying attention to, is at least one point two million dollars of investment and goes up from there, depending on the choices that they make. Um, it seems clear to me that that's, that's not money that's particularly available to us unless we want to change the tax structure in, in Perth County. And um, and yet we hear stories about the province sitting on fairly significant um, uh, cirpluses over the next few years. And um, I guess I would continue to call the province to, to uh work with the municipalities, particularly the smaller ones, but it didn't even look to raise a side. It didn't even look like Toronto or Waterloo are going to break even either. I mean, start to, to crunch the math and maybe Counselor Trintuski was doing the same exercise as I was, but didn't even look like the big cities would do well in terms of breaking even on this. Um, so, so I think the call remains, the province needs to engage with us in a significant way to talk about this. And um, and yes, if we need to bring federal partners to the table, then I think we uh should call on them to do that as well. Um, with regards to the um, the recommendation of their report to, for this, um, I don't I, I have no issue with it. I just don't want it to be lost. I think that this council table, I've spent some time talking about this issue. And uh, we want to know what happens from the de- delegation of the minister in August that the Western Ontario Wardens will hold. We want to know um, what kind of progress we're going to see, if any. And uh, we want, I would say, we've, we've documented as a council here, our support for North Perth's resolution. I think we, we should continue to, to flog that and make it apparent that there is, there's a concern that warrants provincial investment here. Education is, is, I think we can safely say a provincial responsibility administered by local school boards and, and we want the province to own its responsibility for the safety of children when they are in the province's care. My comments.
Hey, anyone else? Counselor McDermott?
Uh, yes, through the warden. Uh, evidently, then the only remedy you have is a hearing officer. You can never go to court on this.
Through the warden, you are correct. So you would contest it through the hearing officer. The hearing officer has the ability to bury or reduce the fine. And then if you are still not happy with the hearing officer, you can appeal to the screening officer, and that is the final level of appeal.
Counselor McKenzie?
Yeah, I agree with um, with Todd's comment. Certainly an excellent part. And yeah, very good, very good. Um, I guess my um, my comment, I guess, is more directed toward Nagus. Uh, I, I certainly appreciate Western Wardens going to lobby us um, on uh, on this cause to the minister uh, or ministers that would be involved. My question is, uh, are they up to speed with this report as much as what we are? And where I'm coming from is, I guess, uh, would it be not worthwhile for Annette to do this presentation to the Western Wardens? So they know exactly the same information that we have.
It probably would. I'm not sure they're totally up, like, they know what's going on, that they know that there's concerns, but maybe Annette could add some uh, items to it that, that they're not totally aware of.
Yeah, like, like, you know, I think this is a, it kind of blew us away with the information we got here this morning.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm assuming that they're probably not up to speed either on the costs involved um, to operate this program. So uh, I think if, if you're going to have the, the chair of the Western Warden still and talk to the, to the ministers, uh, you need the background material. You know, I would strongly suggest, if at all possible, that uh, you ask Annette to come and present to the Western Wardens this very same um, information that we got this morning.
So the only problem is, we had Western Wardens last Friday, the ninth, and we don't meet again until AMO.
Okay.
So that is the, you know, we can send it to uh, we can, we can send it to our chair, um, Glenn McNeil. I can talk to him as well. Um, but I think we'll meet probably prior, during what, during AMO before we have our, our delegation. But that doesn't give them a lot of time to absorb the information that, that we have either. Or.
But through the warden, so we knew this report was coming to county council first. It, it's our intention certainly to make sure that we deal with Kate Burns Gallagher and Justin from Western Wards to share this information and to participate where they would allow us to do that. And I think they'd be more than uh, happy to see our information. Um, we will be at, at that delegation as well, so we can make that happen and we can certainly um, with the warden talking to the chair, that will be of great help too.
Well, I think every, every county is trying to be in the same situation.
Yes.
We have buses, we may have high school, or kids going to school on buses in every county that's involved in this area.
Hmm.
And I assume that they don't have a clue as to the information we got presented here this morning. It's just kind of blows you away, uh, the costs involved.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Counselor Herson?
Couple of quick comments, and I was, Counselor McKenzie just brought that up, like, we can get that to Western County Wardens, you may not be meeting, but Kate Burns Gallagher, Laura Shifte will be dealing with that, and Justin Bromner, is it Bromner? I got the name right?
Yeah.
Anyway, like, they, they love that information. Like, I guess, sitting here thinking as you were getting that excellent report from Annette, sometimes you have to think outside the box. I'm sitting, the cost around that program is so mind-blowing, it is funny. That's one county. I'm thinking, so what if you were to put a similar amount of money into police budgets? Hire more officers? And link off more than one problem? As we all hear about lack of response time, the lack of this, lack of that, because they're pinched for officers, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. It, it's just a thought.
Counselor Casper?
Just as a piece of information to support Counselor Herson's uh, thinking on this. Apparently even police are having difficulty recruiting new members, and so um, finding uh people who are willing to serve in that capacity is proving to be a challenge for our society.
Yeah, the uh, police killings doesn't help that matter. I've talked to a few of the police officers. There's people that are Korean, police college, and have now walked away.
Okay, other comments or questions?
Who just thought ahead?
I guess I have, uh, I was thinking almost the same thing as Jim. That's kind of scary, but uh, we are on the same page. The other thing, what if we ask for higher fines? Like, is a fine high enough for someone who speeds and goes by a bus? Maybe they should have a higher fine, or maybe they even should lose their license for a, a, a time. And that might deter some people from really doing what they're doing. You know, that, that, that's something else that we could ask the minister for. Counselor McDermott?
Uh, no, no, I agree with you that uh, four hundred and ninety bucks is just the cost to do in business.
Not even.
Okay, any more comments or questions? Yes, Annette, uh, very good report. You spent a lot of time there, and we thank you for that, so, and we will make sure it gets to Western Wardens, so. We do have a motion that council receives the administrative monetary penalty system and automated school bus stop armed camera system report, and that council refer the issue of the potential installation of school bus armed cameras to the Community Safety and Wellbeing Council for research and collaboration. Moved by Counselor Casper.
Could I suggest a small amendment perhaps before we, we move forward? And that we forward a copy of this report to our local MPP and MP? With, with expression of concern.
Okay, and add that to the motion. You got that, Justin? Or Justin Tyler?
Uh, sorry, my Counselor Casper, do we have a seconder?
I wanted to add another amendment to say that. Um, and uh, council recommend that we continue to, continue to lobby the province Ontario through the Western Wardens Caucus.
Hey, are you good with that? Okay, we'll add that to the motion as well. Okay, now we need a seconder. Counselor McKenzie? Any more comments or questions? All in favor? Carry. Okay, now we're moving to council reports. Do we have any council reports?
Counselor Orr? I'd just like to mention it for itself, we did hire a new CAO, Fred Frank Philly. He will start July fourth. And he will, Rebecca's still staying on, but her, moving her back to doing what she likes and with enough, so. Happy to have a new CAO.
Okay, anyone else? We don't have any bylaws?
That's a special announcement, it was going to go out this week. You see it again?
No, no, no.
Apparently that, that, okay. No, it had to be reviewed by staff and, and you see, A O, Fred Frank Philly. Everybody was happy and it was to the load, so apparently it hasn't quite made the progression.
Okay, do we have any notes, motions? Any other business? I just, I have two or three things. Uh, I did mention the, the tour that is happening today, the Faux House Tour. Um, we also want to congratulate Tyler on his uh, award at AMCTO this week. Congratulations. And today is also Sally's last day. And we just wanted to, unfortunately Sally can't be with us, but hopefully she can hear somewhere. Uh, just want to thank her for all that she's done for the County of Perth and wish her well as she uh, um, goes on to new endeavors, so. Any uh, announcements? We do have a need for a closed session, so the motion to go into that is Perth County Council moving to closed session at approximately ten forty-two AM in accordance with section two thirty-nine of the Municipal Act SO dot, S dot O dot two thousand and one, C dot twenty-five to consider a matter pertaining to instruction to be applied to negotiations. That's to deal with transportation. We need a motion to go in, moved by Counselor Smith, seconded by Counselor McDermott, all in favor. Carry. So we're going to take a five-minute break while we uh, get everything set up and, and get into that. Thanks everyone else for attending this morning. Great to see you, and I hope you have a great rest of your day. Okay, we do have a motion that the bylaw thirty-nine thirty-four dash twenty twenty-three, a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council of the Corporation of the County of Perth at its regular meeting held June fifteen, twenty twenty-three is read a first, second and third time and finally passed June fifteen, twenty twenty-three. Moved by Counselor McDermott, seconded by Counselor Trankowski, all in favor. Carries. And the last motion of the morning is the council be adjourned at approximately eleven oh four AM. Moved by Counselor Kasonberg, seconded by Counselor Orr, all in favor.